Thank you for the meeting in order, please. If we could stand and say the name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. I just would like to open the meeting with a quick statement about an issue we just recently had last night. So on Monday evening last night, an alert community member notified the Amherst Police Department about some racist graffiti that was spray painted onto the playground equipment at Windermere Boulevard Elementary School. We applaud the community members' awareness and thank our facility staff who took quick action to remove the graffiti, which it was removed last night. We are proud of the diversity within our district and will continue doing everything we can to promote the diversity within our schools and our school community. The safety and security of our students and families is of the utmost importance to us. Please know we will continue to maintain a school culture of acceptance and respect that enables all students to attend a safe and educationally stimulating environment each day. Behavior that contradicts this expectation of any other outlined in our Code of Conduct has not and will not be tolerated. We will continue to cooperate with the authorities as they investigate this matter. The Board and all of our administrators attended a public rally at Windermere Boulevard today that was organized by some of our families over there. So it was well-attended. Our principals made some statements. So we'll probably see that on the news later tonight. With that, I don't believe we have any visitors wishing to speak or any written communication. You don't know if we've had any special committee meetings since our last meeting? All right. With that, we'll turn it over to you for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. The first item allows me the opportunity to welcome Rick Gancey from Capital Markets to talk about the issue or the decision that we talked about back in the spring relative to our 20-plus million dollar ban at the time that we were trying to decide whether to go to bond or not. We faced the same decision point as we looked towards the $4 million borrowing that we did for the Windermere HVAC project. So Rick is here to talk about the state of the state as it relates to the bond market and offer a recommendation as it relates to ban versus bond, similar to last time.
Great to get.
Thanks again for having me at the meeting. I know there's a couple, two new board members. Well, so by way of background, Rick Gancey, Capital Markets advisor. Our firm serves as a financial advisor to the district on the issuance of bond finance capital projects. So we've worked with the district for a number of years, structuring the bond issues, working on the state aid side of finances to help the district in planning forward for its capital projects. So we were here last in March, I believe, late March, to talk about the issuance of renewal of a bond anticipation note. As Tony pointed out, the terminology ban would be bond anticipation note, which is a short-term instrument that you use to finance capital projects. The decision in March was, given where interest rates were, given where the expectation was on rates, the decision was made back then to convert the bond anticipation notes to bonds. Part of the reason being is that capital project was completed. You know, costs were known. The district was looking to move forward to essentially fix its cost on the bond issue. So the decision was made back in March to issue bonds. And the first slide here, and now we're going to talk today about the same decision path and what we do with the Windermere HVAC project, which currently is in bond anticipation notes to mature in the middle of September. So we look to sell this issue late August or the September to close on that in anticipation of the bans coming due in September. So if you look at the first slide, you could all pat yourself on the back that you made the right decision by way of issuing bonds versus, you know, long-term, issuing bonds versus renewing notes. So the top line, which is the light blue, is the market on the date that we were here for the last meeting, March 30th of '17. The red one is the date we actually sold the bonds. So you can see from the time in late March till when we sold the bonds, the market interest rates plummeted. So the district was able to capture significant interest rate savings by working through the bond process because rates came down dramatically in that two-month period from the last meeting till when we actually sold the bonds. So it saved a significant amount of interest expense versus what we projected at that meeting back in March. So things have continued to stabilize. The line, it's kind of tough to see because the rates are very comparable to where we were back in June. So the rates as of August 10th are pretty much right in line with the yield curve for interest rates back in June when we sold the bonds for the larger part of the capital project. So this is just going to give you a snapshot of where the market was. And I didn't put it included here, but the market we talked about last time around the election time, you know, was a lot higher. And rates were starting to trend downward to where we were in March. And then they've continued since that period. And we're in a period now where we're still pretty low from a historical perspective. So that gives a flavor of sort of interest rates in general. The next slide. There we go. Scan this a little bit here. So we sold bonds on behalf of the district early June 2017. And we're expecting sort of, you know, pretty decent market support for the transaction. Amherst School is a, you know, pretty good rated credit by Moody's. So we're kind of hoping to get, you know, four or five bids, what typically we'll see out of a transaction. But this particular day in the market, we actually received nine bids from the market, which was quite astonishing. So they kind of drove a lot of the market demand, which drove the rates down, which created a favorable result for the district. So here's some of the names that put, just to kind of give you a flavor of, you know, we all read the Wall Street Journal. We see some of the investment banking names. But this is a pretty impressive group of different investment banks that bid the transaction. Jenny Montgomery Scott, which is out of Pennsylvania area, typically bids on a lot of these transactions in New York. But they were the winning bid at a true interest cost of 2.03, which was quite good for a 15-year bond at a rate pushing 2%. So as you see, the second bid was FTN Financial, which is First Tennessee National, which is a bank obviously down south, 2.0389. The winning bid was 2.0383. So very tight spread between the two, which is like what we like to see. Then some of the names that you might be familiar with, Fidelity, PNC out of Philadelphia, JP Morgan Securities, Robert Baer. Rosewood &amp; Cross is a regional broker-dealer that primarily works in the New York local government space. They have a retail office in the Alton Square Building. And then we had Bank of America, obviously we all know, and then Lloyd &amp; Blair, which is another merchant bank in New York. So good mix of different names. You know, we're pleased with the market support on this transaction. And we would expect the same result on the next Windermere project. A little bit smaller size. It's only about $4 million. But we'd expect, you know, some of the similar names that we saw in this transaction. So I'll pause there for a second if any questions people might have before we dig into the analysis on the Windermere project. The next slide, you know, I put it in the same format as we worked through last time just to kind of give you a reference point. So this is going to be $3.9 million to permanently finance the Windermere bond anticipation notes that are currently outstanding. So if the decision path is to issue serial bonds in 2017, the next couple of weeks, we're projecting a total interest due of about 543 grand, which is a bottom number here. This is over the life of the transaction. Then what we did last time, and we'll do it similar today, is that if the decision was to issue bond anticipation notes one more year and then gamble on where interest rates are going to be a year from now, what would be your break-even scenario? So what we looked at is, if you did bonds currently, you'd have 543,141 of interest expense. But if you did bond anticipation notes, and again, bond anticipation notes are at a rate of about 150 currently, whereas long-term rates obviously are higher because the term of it is longer than one year. You'd have a total interest expense of about 505 grand. So a difference of only, you know, $30-something thousand spread out of a 15-year period on an annual basis really isn't all that much.
What are we assuming in 2019 that the interest rate would be? What it is today in that scenario?
In this scenario, it's one more year of bands at 1.5%. And then long-term bonds thereafter at rates that are the same as today.
Same as today, okay.
So this assumes rates are comparable today as they will be a year from now. Then you're better off issuing bands and then issuing bonds. But again, qualify that to say rates are going to be the same there a year from now. So as we did last time, we said, all right, what if, what's the break-even scenario, right? What if we issue bands and then issue bonds next year? What's the break-even to get to a point where if we did bonds today, you'd be almost neutral, right? So the way we did this is we said, all right, we'll do bond anticipation notes for a year. If rates rose by 13 basis points between now and next September, and you're sensing break-even from doing bonds today, the 13 basis points isn't all that much. They could certainly move a lot more than that. Then you're worse off by waiting than doing bonds today. So 13 basis points, I'll give you an example of sort of, we've moved the other way. What you're looking at right here, you know, the 10-year point, you went from 275 to 225. That's 50 basis points movement between March and June, early June of this year. So we could, we could get in a position where we're here, but in September, we could be back up here. Then you're worse off than you would be by just converting to bonds today, knowing that rates are still pretty low. Our recommendation is, given where rates are today, not to take the risk that rates could rise between now and September. Now, rates could go down. But it's the risk that, you know, we all try to avoid is interest rate risk. So I think from our perspective, the Board made the right decision back in March to convert to bonds at that time. And I think, given that rates are the same, pretty much the same as where we are, where we were in June, that I think it's the same sort of thought pattern to do, convert to bonds this year to know, you know, what your fixed cost is in the next 15 years. So with that, I, you know, welcome any questions on the thought process or prior results or sort of where we're at.
What do you expect rates to be during next year?
You know, if I had an expectation where rates are, you know, I think we're in a good position now. I think if you look at the rates, you know, from June until now, things have been kind of constant. And I think we're kind of settled into a spot now where, absent any like drastic like tax law changes and what's going on in Washington, I don't really expect anything to happen like immediately.
Right.
That's the only real risk is what happens to the tax exemption.
All year.
We haven't seen any proposals that say tax exemptions will be, we'll get rid of. But there are some things that are changing the tax code that could have an impact on the market, you know, within the next year or so. But I think what's going on in Washington globally, I think deflected quality is still occurring. I think treasuries have performed well. You think municipal bonds have performed well. So I'd be surprised in the next, you know, couple of months if we had any drastic movements in the market. But I think we're at a pretty good level. As you can see, between June and August, we're pretty much in the same spot as one month ago.
But if we go with another ban, we're locked in for a full year.
Yes.
You know, and a year from now, where do we expect?
That's interest rate risk, certainly. Yeah, so you're locked in until next September. So if rates move away from you six months, nine months from now, you're at the mercy of the market at the time of something like that. We know where the market is today. It's always really...
And if we went with a 15-year bond and the rates dropped drastically in a year or two, do we have the opportunity to refinance?
Yeah, most of these bonds are issued with a nine-year optional call redemption or provision at par. So you have an opportunity down the road to certainly refinance them. The market standard is a nine-year at-par call. Anything lower than that, Tony, is a big market penalty.
It's okay.
Seven or six-year call, you're probably looking at 50 to 60 basis points adjustment, which isn't worth it.
Right.
Where rates are today, you know, nine-year standard calls are what we do. Something similar to what we did on the last bond issue.
Does anyone else have any questions? Because I'm going to pull the Board on what they would like to do.
We are in the fight with some of the Fed's rates. So we're with their actions this summer of '15. And it indicated they want to do again, but some people are skeptical about whether or not they will. But I mean, it's the state of the attachment of the Federal Reserve to continue to raise rates. So I don't know what a lot of people are looking at. Most certainly, even a year, we'll get one potential one rate maturity.
Sure, I'd talk to them.
It's just going to make the bands, to me, something that I don't think we're going to do. I don't think there's enough argument.
I think it's really, bands one more year is kind of short-sighted because, I mean, you save really the first year 40 grand, which you run the risk that rates could rise. And then the 40 grand, you take them pretty quickly.
They just have to be in the pocket.
Before I pull the Board, I just want to check with Mr. Zizinski. Are you concur with this recommendation? Mr. Spinnella, you also?
Yeah.
All right. I'll start with you, Mr. Smith. Are you good with going with the long-term?
Yeah, I agree.
With bonding it? I am, Ms. Love.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we'll...
So we've already started the process with the business office to get the documents updated. So we'll go down the path of issuing long-term bonds.
Yeah, I appreciate the thoughtful analysis and, you know, some of the conservative assumptions built into here and helps us make an informed decision. So...
We appreciate the Board, you know, discussing things like this because it's an important decision, obviously. We're going to prove us on the same page.
Yeah, thank you, Rick.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome.
We'll be in contact with your office soon. Thanks.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you, everybody. We have two other items in the superintendent's report related to the upcoming year. First one is the board topics for the year. So certainly, you know, this is always, as I indicated, a living document. You know, there's opportunity for flexibility. But I wanted to use this discussion with the Board to see if there was any topics that you would like to see considered that aren't here or if there are any topics or questions that you'd like some clarification by. So just so you're aware how this was developed, Mrs. Zizinski and I sat down and plotted most of our budget development based on her budget development calendar and the timeline that we've been successful with last year. And now, after we plotted that, you know, we went to our other priorities and initiatives that exist within the school district. And, you know, obviously, our strategic plan is one of the larger initiatives that you'll see several times throughout here. So this is really an opportunity for the Board to offer any topics for consideration. I can take note of them. And then as the meetings unfold, we'll have the opportunity to add them or not, depending upon how many topics appear on the list for any given meeting.
Do we, just because when I scanned this, I didn't see, do we, normally we've done like a technology update or something annually from the committee?
Yeah.
Is that what that is? I didn't see that on here.
Well, I put that as a possible addition on the second page. One of the larger strategic initiatives that Dr. Sean Feld will be working on is the Smart Schools Bond Act Plan. Not knowing exactly how that plan will unfold, we have it as a possible addition. But we did preliminarily in our discussions think it might be a good time to discuss at some time in January. But we'll have to see how the committee and the planning goes before we commit to the timing. But that would be the technology update or the most significant thing the Technology Committee would be tackling.
I like the timing of this past year. Again, this year, the elementary curriculum update in October filed by the second day of the update. So that timing of that is really sort of... Teachers have been preparing and writing.
Thank you.
Glad that was in there.
Yeah, it's been a very busy and productive summer. So we're eager to share a lot of the things that have happened within our curriculum committees.
We're having that meeting in the WBS library. Are we going to have meetings in other locations?
That's something to consider. That one is there because we're looking to make, unveil the renovation that was made possible by the quest from the former employee. But certainly, if we find that that's a productive endeavor, we can look to do it throughout the year with other buildings. I can make up of that.
Yeah, because I, you know, just thinking through it, I think a lot of elementary parents haven't ever been exposed to middle school. And when they come here, it's their first exposure to it. And that library is pretty amazing. And it's got the technology and space to handle, you know, our usual SaaS crowd. It just seems like it would be, and it's a neat idea.
One thought, as you're talking about that, that's coming to mind is we could, when each building has the opportunity to do their strategic plan building update, hold it in a space in the building. That's a good idea.
Yeah, I think that might draw people to the meetings, you know, because it's just an interesting exposure.
Good idea, thank you. And again, this is a living document. You know, it's my best projection at what the future looks like now and what I, and the initiatives I know that we're working on. However, as in past years, as things develop throughout the school year that we think are important to bring to the public meeting, we've had the opportunity for flexibility. So I think we have some of that built in here as well.
Did we have on here, I just, and again, with all the different things I may have placed over, but with our, just a report out from the Alternative Funding Committee?
November 7th.
Oh, okay, just, okay. I'm thinking one thing and see, show us your stripes.
Show us your stripes. That would be the Alternative Funding Committee report.
Okay.
You know, the legislation hasn't changed during the same date. October 21st.
Correct. Yeah, we'll update all of that communication and get it out in all the appropriate places. Dr. Ilk started last night at the athletic kickoff promoting that. Okay, well, as usual, this is not speak now or forever hold your peace. This is an ongoing conversation. So if something comes up, we can certainly add it. But thank you for reviewing that and the discussion tonight. The other topic I have for the superintendent's report is the Board retreat. So we've had some topics for consideration. President Steinle and Vice President Erst and I talked about during our agenda-setting meeting. Some of those topics include, you know, governance team roles and responsibilities, which could be done by our attorneys or another consultant for a reasonable cost that we've done in the past. A presentation from our principals and representatives from the building action planning teams on their plan for the year. So when they come and do their building updates, you're not seeing the plan for the first time, but it's more of the highlights of the things they've accomplished as opposed to, you know, rolling out the plan for the first time. And then some setting of goals for the Board for the year, goal setting. Those were three topics that came to mind. Keep in mind, we were targeting a three- to four-hour window. So we don't want to over-commit ourselves and not accomplish what we're looking to do. But was looking to get feedback from everyone to see if there was any additional topics you'd like to consider.
Can you clarify what you mean by governance team roles? Is this like, you know, the board is responsible for this and the kind of is responsible for this?
Well, a little bit of what like we did last year as an annual reminder. We do have two new board members, so...
Who have to have the training and that's drilled into them, that training.
So that's one topic that was just on the table.
I think it's always worth a half-hour refresher. I think honestly, even, you know, we get to a point where we have these discussions and we get familiar with each other and we start treating each other a certain way. And I think it's always good to have that reset and say, okay, you know, we're board members. Here's what we should be doing. Think through for yourself whether you're doing it or not. I personally think I benefit from that update. So I don't think it needs to be...
Through like the self-evaluation that we should be doing as a board? Because I'd really love to see that. You know, I know we were talking about a tool for that or, you know, but the one time we had that survey that we all did beforehand and we talked about the results at the board retreat, that was really useful to me, I thought.
I think we were thought, didn't we think we were going to do a separate meeting for the self-evaluation?
Yeah, we're going to, you know, that is going to be one of my suggestions, one of our board goals for this year that we didn't complete last year is to, just like we took on the superintendent evaluation, is to get a board evaluation tool that we do at the end of the year.
But if you front-loaded it with a survey that you all did individually and the results became the basis for that conversation, I think that would be feasible.
Sure, I still have that somewhere.
Yeah. Yeah, and we can, with the technology we have, it's easy for us to put something out for you to complete individually. And then we can look at the individual for you to complete individually and then we can look at the individual, or look at the results as part of that discussion within that 30-minute or so timeframe.
What's our, we were talking about October.
Yeah, I mean, if there's, if there's any other discussion on the topics or does everybody feel comfortable with what we've outlined at this point? So then the next time would be the time we're looking at a three- to four-hour window. I think the first question would be, you know, evening or weekend would be that to decide. And then if you, if we, obviously, if you choose evening, we try to put out some dates to coordinate. If you're looking for a Saturday morning type of deal, we could certainly do that as well. So I think if we decide evening or weekend, then we can put out some proposed dates and
Yeah, that's the thing, I understand.
I think we wouldn't want to go any further than like the second week of October.
I don't know about the rest of you. I get kids that are always in activities on the weekends, so, I mean, I mean, if we can do it on off-board week.
I see, so.
It's, yeah. We choose a few dates and we know when that happens.
Tuesday. Just an off-board week.
Try to stick to Tuesday when there's not a meeting?
No, that's a good idea. Does that work for you now? Does Tuesday work for you now?
Yeah.
All right, I could send out a list of upcoming Tuesdays and chart everybody's availability and hopefully there's a day that works for everyone. Okay. And then the last piece of discussion is the annual building visits. So as you all may be aware, as board members, typically we've toured buildings. I think, you know, we have a new director of facilities that has some really interesting summer projects going on, including but not limited to LED lighting in our elementary gyms. So I would like to have the opportunity prior to the start of the school year, maybe the last week of August, to have all of you visit the buildings with him, since he's fairly new to our staff and have him showcase some of the things that he's been working on with the staff over the summer. Historically, we've toured the buildings and taken a look at capital construction that's gone on. This year, we don't have capital construction, but he does have some interesting projects going on. So the week of August 28th, you know, all of our faculty and staff come back the 29th, 30th, and 31st. So one of those days, I'd like to have us, you know, meet for 15, 20 minutes per building and then, you know, just have him highlight some of the things that have gone on with his staff in each building. So I will send out a note to you on that and if in the event you can't make it, someone who is in attendance will be able to report out September 5th at our board meeting about what we saw and some of those things. I could even ask Mr. Rampado to do a presentation that day relative to our topic, which is on here, related to the opening of the school. So if you, if we pick a date and you can't make it, we'll have the opportunity for some pictures and things so that you can see what we toured at the meeting.
It's usually afternoon, later?
Yeah, after dinner, six-ish. Six, try to be done by 7:30. We don't have to go through the entire building and each space, we'll just go to the areas that he wants to showcase, because most of the buildings are just being spiffed up for the new year and cleaned. You know, there's just areas that he's had new projects. Okay. Before you move into new business, I just wanted to let the board know there was a change to item F1I in the agenda that was posted on Friday online. Total taxable assessment was listed there as opposed to the rate. So Mrs. Ziski caught it in her review of the agenda and we printed a new version for tonight's meeting and posted it online for public. That's it for the superintendent?
All right. Then we will need a motion for new business.
I just want to make a motion for new business items F1A through M, 2A through U, 3B through H.
Wait a second. Mr. Ma. All right, all those in favor of new business items, F1A through M, 2A through U, and 3B through H, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. I'd like to point out, as we have a new teacher in our audience who was just appointed tonight, Ms. Solinski, did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, you did.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Look forward to having you.
I'm looking forward to being here at Amherst, too.
That's great.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. We, I don't believe I have any follow-up action items. Did you?
I'm not aware of.
Okay, I didn't think so either.
Dave, just a couple of things to schedule. Schedule the retreat, schedule the building visit.
We'll need a motion to convene to executive session.
We need to convene to executive session for matters regarding tax surcharge.
All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Appreciate it.